Ms. Snyder, can we do a sound check with you just to make sure we can hear you?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's a little low.
Okay.
Can you hear me better now?
That's way better. Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Bates, can we do a sound check to make sure we can hear you?
Yeah, this is William. Check.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Rebecca Sharp, just a quick sound check.
Hello.
Okay, great. Nothing to hear yet, Mr. Reitinger.
We're just waiting on one more member, but I think we may go ahead. Go ahead. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this May 25th Electronic Hybrid School Board Work Session to Order. Ms. Kedel, can you call the role?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Mr. Henderson. Ms. Litten.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
And Dr. Ruiz-Balanis.
Here.
Thank you. He's here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kedel. Can everybody join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
To adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Kedel, can you call the role?
Yes. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Dr. Ruiz-Balanis.
Yes.
Thank you. He's here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kedel. Can everybody join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
To adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Kedel, can you call the role?
Yes. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Dr. Ruiz-Balanis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kedel. And with that, we will dive into our work session, and I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Litten. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. It is certainly a full agenda for the evening. And the first item that we have this evening to discuss is the Virginia Mathematics Pathways Initiative. This is part of the state of Virginia, the Commonwealth of Virginia's move to begin looking at the math changes that will happen subsequent to the new adoption of the math SOLs in 2023. Tonight, we have two people that are going to do the presentation for us. The first person I'd like to recognize is Jen Fessenden. Many of you know Jen as our amazing math specialist here in the City of Falls Church, who works with all of our schools. And the second is our amazing Chief Academic Officer, Mr. William Bates. This evening, their presentation is going to walk you through the Virginia Math Pathways Initiative, but at the same time, it's also going to give you, separate out a little bit of fact from a little bit of fiction that may also be in the land that you may have heard that may or may not be true. So we look forward to hearing their presentation. So with that, Mr. Bates, I will turn it over to you, and then I believe you'll turn it over to Ms. Fessenden. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Board, for giving us this opportunity to provide an update and share our work as it relates to the VMPI. If you remember, back in April, we provided some, just over, some general information on the proposal of VMPI, which is the mathematics curriculum in grades K through 12, which looks at aligning the instruction with the essential skills and knowledge that students would need to succeed in the 21st century. And so with that, we will still be responsible for creating our courses and designing the curricula to implement the state standards. Dr. Noonan has shared with you all in the past that one thing we do pride ourselves in FCCPS is doing a lot of our own curriculum writing, so we will still be doing a lot of that work as it relates to the writing of the curriculum. But VMPI works or seeks to increase rigor by integrating mathematical content and concepts, emphasizing reasoning and problem solving, and providing a highly relevant experience for students. So in FCCPS, we're going to constantly and continuously look for new approaches and opportunities to enhance our curriculum and elevate student learning as it relates to mathematics instruction. Under the leadership of Jen Fessenden, our curriculum and instruction team is working closely with VDOE to ensure implementation and equitable practices as it relates to mathematics opportunities for all students in FCCPS. So looking at this first slide here, we wanted to share what parents can expect or continue to expect in FCCPS. We are a pre-K-12 IB school division, and we offer that continuum. And so parents can know that they can expect that continued alignment with the rigors of IB as it relates to mathematics instruction. Our teachers do a fantastic job of identifying students' needs, understanding the data, and getting intimate with that data so they can meet the needs of individual students, and they do that through the differentiation of instruction. That's something that would also continue. We're also going to continue to provide opportunities for mathematics acceleration. We know that that's something that a question or multiple questions had come up around that, and so students will still have that opportunity for acceleration in mathematics. And I think most importantly, as we look at the matriculation up, students who seek to have opportunities or take those avenues into advanced academics as it relates to mathematics curriculum, we will also ensure that students would be prepared for success in our highest-level course offerings once they meet or once they reach the high school. So before I turn it over to Ms. Fessenden, I just wanted to take a moment to look at our outcomes. And so during this presentation, we will review the following items. We're going to look at the goals behind VMPI. We're also going to look at the background and the purpose for why VMPI was established and why mathematics curriculum in the state is taking the direction that it's taking. We'll also look at the course progression, and then Jen will share our timeline for implementation. And then finally, she'll go over the next steps that we're looking at as far as moving this work forward as we continue to work toward implementation in the future. So without further ado, Ms. Jen Fessenden.
Ms. Bates, so I just wanted to start by sharing some of the critical conversations that have been happening, not only in Virginia but around the country as we're continuously reflecting upon our practice and seeking ways to improve student learning. We are asking ourselves, does our math instruction meet students' future needs? Are there barriers that exist for students who are not immediately successful in math or able to achieve, and are there equitable opportunities for all students to learn rigorous mathematics that will prepare them for the future and not just the next course in our math progression? And this slide shows the main goals of the VMPI or the Virginia Mathematics Pathway Initiative that essentially address those critical conversations. We'll go deeper into the goals of the initiative throughout this whole presentation, but in short, the main goals are to improve equity in mathematics learning opportunities, empower students to be active participants in a quantitative world, encourage students to see themselves as knowers and doers of mathematics, identify K-12 mathematics pathways that support future success, and collaborate with multiple stakeholders to advance mathematics education. And to go a little bit deeper into the big picture of the VMPI, one goal is to modernize and update Virginia's mathematics curriculum in grades K through 12 to align instruction with the essential knowledge and skills students need to succeed in the 21st century economy. It's really a K-12 package that builds upon each other. The proposals would update Virginia's mathematics standards of learning, just like happens every seven years. And we, the local school districts, would then be responsible for creating our own courses and designing our own curricula, as Mr. Bates stated, to implement those state standards, just as we do now. The VMPI maintains Virginia's rigorous mathematics instruction for all students and strives to provide all students with opportunities to receive high-quality, highly-relevant post-secondary or high-quality, highly-relevant math instruction that is tailored to their specific post-secondary goals, which is different. And you'll hear and see a little more about that in a few minutes. So we talked very briefly about the main goals of VMPI, and I just want to provide a little context that the work came from or stems from these books. They're called Catalyzing Change in Mathematics. And these are written by the Virginia, or not the Virginia, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. And so the, it began, the core of this work began in the high school mathematics book. And so then they stemmed out and created the middle school mathematics book and the elementary mathematics book. And this is the work that we'll be diving deeper into as a school district. Some key things to know about the background of VMPI is that this is a joint initiative. It's not just a Commonwealth of Virginia thing. It's an initiative between the Virginia Department of Education, the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia, and the Virginia Community College System. There are 23 states and two and four-year colleges taking part of this initiative. The VMPI proposes instructional and institutional changes that will strengthen the alignment between K-12 and higher education mathematics while ensuring that students are better prepared for college and career success. They're working with higher ed across the state to increase alignment. And what we're finding and the research that they did is that only 28% of college degrees require calculus. And so we just want to make sure that we are providing deep mathematics learning for the other 72%, and not just aiming for only calculus. And so the VMPI really is going to offer multiple pathways to all students. But we certainly do not and will not overlook that 28% who also, who do want to take calculus in high school. And so just to reiterate, this is an initiative. It's still in, or this initiative is still in the planning stages. Feedback is still being collected, and revisions are still happening. I actually just got off of a 6:30 call with the state with updates, the community webinar with updates on the VMPI. So this is changing. Literally, I wrote the name of something changed from Friday when this was updated to upload it to board docs to today. So things are still changing, revisions are still being made, and so we're providing you today a high-level overview. And we'll know and for more information, and we'll keep updating you with the new information as we go along. But the, it will, the concrete standards recommendations, which is essentially the revision of the standards of learning, will go to the state superintendent and school board in 2022, actually. And the standards of learning go through the revision cycle every seven years, as I stated before, and cover grades K through 12. So what does this actually mean? It means that all students will take four years of high school mathematics. It means that most students, as is now, will remain in heterogeneous grade-level courses K through 10. Nothing that doesn't change. The implementation of VMPI would still allow for student acceleration in mathematics content according to ability and achievement, just as it does now. It does not dictate how and when students take specific courses. It just opens up more pathways for students. Grades 11 and 12 will have much more diverse offerings than they do now, and specialization will allow for multiple pathways that are equally as rigorous to a calculus course. And calculus and IB courses are not being eliminated. Again, just more pathways are being created for all students. And so this is what it looks like in a graphic. So we have the foundational mathematics concepts in grades K through 7, and then we have the essential mathematics concepts in grades 8 through 10. And the grades are a little deceiving because it doesn't necessarily mean that an eighth grader or a 10th grader would be in the essential mathematics concepts. And actually, in my state meeting before this, they eliminated the grade-level bans on their graphics. So what it means is that the students in grades K through 7 will continue doing similar work that they're doing now in number and number sense, computation and estimation, measurement and geometry, probability and statistics, and patterns, functions, and algebra. Then when they move out of the foundational mathematics concepts, they will move into the essential mathematics concepts. And that, these will be an essential concepts course 1, an essential concepts course 2, and an essential concepts course 3. So it doesn't correlate to grades 8, 9, and 10. It will actually be course 1, 2, and 3. And courses 2 and 3 will each be for a high school credit. And so what that will look like is, if it's approved as proposed, is that we will no longer have a separate, they call it an algebra, geometry, algebra 2 sandwich. So we'll no longer have the algebra 1, geometry, and algebra 2. It'll be integrated mathematics, and we'll also include the data analysis, mathematical modeling, functions, and algebra, spatial reasoning, and probability. So the algebra 1, geometry, and algebra 2 content is not being eliminated, but it's being blended into a seamless progression of connected learning. So it's, we won't have the, you go to algebra 1, and then you go to algebra 2 and forget some of the algebra 1, so the algebra 2 teachers have to spend time connecting back to algebra 1 that they had two years prior. The foundation of VMPI's integrated mathematics content approach is common in many countries, including countries that are chief global competitors. And actually, I was talking about this with Dan Coaster, IB, our DP coordinator over at the high school, and he was really excited that we're moving, that this would move to a more integrated mathematics model because that is IB. And so that's really exciting for us, in particular, our school district. So the, this slide shows you, it used to be called the Advanced Mathematics Concepts. It is now called the Pathway-Focused Mathematics Concepts because they're not advanced concepts, they're just different pathways that students are going to be able to take when they're in 11th and 12th grade. And so, or sooner, if they are, if they are ready for these courses sooner. But there'll be some new courses being, there are being some, there are some new courses being developed. And you'll see that it focuses around data modules, design modules, analysis modules, modeling modules, computing modules. And those are half-credit course options. And then students will also have the option to take some full-credit course options. And again, this is, these are all of the options that the state is creating, and then we, as a local school district, will have the opportunity to use the, like, the roadmap that they've created with their standards of learning to create the courses that best fit our school district. And then a little more information on the timeline. Right now, they're still developing these, these concepts and courses. And so in 2022, the initial proposal will be sent to the Board of Education to review, and then they would approve it in 2023. We'd have a crosswalk year in 2024, 2025, and a crosswalk year means we just make sure that we're not losing anything in the transition, that we're really taking a look at the progressions that we currently have and the progressions that we will have and implementing it into a seamless process. And that work for us actually begins prior. We can't just do that in one year. We'll need to make sure that we're building that in as we continue along. And then full implementation of the new standards of learning would be in year 2025. And our current third-grade class will be the first class that will graduate underneath the new graduation requirements. So it seems far off, but thinking about those students as third graders, but it's not as far off as we think. And so again, the VMPI is still in the development stage, and the changes are being proposed. And a variety of feedback is welcome. And the changes are, again, just part of the regular 2023 update of the Virginia Standards of Learning that are updated once every seven years. But it's, this is a really heavily researched-back change of, or update of standards this time. And again, just to say it one more time, that there will be many opportunities for public comment and revisions. So what does that mean for us in Falls Church City? We are going to work now on, well, I should just say, we work every year on updating our curriculum. And so we're going to continue to do that. And so our curriculum updates for this year, for this summer, actually, are, we think it's really important. We've worked really hard over the last couple of years to build out a curriculum for our teachers that digs deep into the standards. And so our next step with that is to make sure that we have resources and learning opportunities for teachers to provide rich mathematics experiences for all students. So we have some work happening this summer with Heidi Ling, our gifted specialist at TJ, where the things that she, the activities and experiences that she provides for A level students are going to be embedded where appropriate into all of our curriculum documents to make sure that all of our students have access to the great things that she does with her A level 2 classes. We've purchased some additional resources to build our curriculum out to include rich problem-solving tasks and projects to our curriculum for all students. We are going to, for next school year, add a K-5 mathematics specialist position, and that will be Larkin Epstein, she's the current fourth-grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson, and a part-time mathematics coach, Jennifer O'Keefe, at the high school. And so these two positions are in addition to our wonderful math specialist, Ms. Sarah Leahy, at Henderson currently. So these three mathematics specialists and myself will collaborate around this work and really lead this work. All schools will now have a math specialist, as we do have, as we have reading specialists, and we'll really work to strengthen our instructional programming and professional learning. We do this anyways, regardless of this initiative or the change in standards. That's just where we are as a district. We're at the place to go even deeper. And so it's, it's, it's nice that this work with the VMPI is happening around the same time. So we were able to fund that K-5 support math specialist through the CARES funding and the high school coach by being creative with our staffing to make sure that we have positions in place to do the work that it takes to create that robust mathematics K-12, pre-K-12 continuum in our school district. And we are going to be able to begin our Catalyzing Change book study and professional learning around this work. We were going to start it this year, and then a little thing called COVID happened, and we pushed pause on that, but we'll be able to dig a little bit deeper into those books via a book study and some professional learning. And then I continue to work with our region four. We meet regularly, all the math supervisors from the school districts in the region meet together regularly to make sure that we're aligning across divisions as well, not just within divisions. And we also are working really closely with the state as they develop this initiative even further. So that was a lot of information. Very quickly, if you have any questions, I will be happy to try to answer them, and if I don't have the answer, I'm happy to find the answer.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I will, we can see if the board has questions. Anybody? Mr. Henderson.
Yes. How do we bring parents up to speed on the new math?
We are going to work now on, well, I should just say, we work every year on updating our our curriculum. And so we're going to continue to do that. And so our curriculum updates for this year, for this summer, actually, are we think it's really important. We've worked really hard over the last couple of years to build out a curriculum for our teachers that digs deep into the standards. And so our our next step with that is to make sure that we have resources and learning opportunities for teachers to provide rich mathematics experiences for all students. So we have some work happening this summer with Heidi Lang, our gifted specialist at TJ. Where the things that she the activities and and experiences that she provides for ace level students are going to be embedded where appropriate into all of our curriculum documents to make sure that all of our students have access to the great things that she does with our ace level two classes. We've purchased some additional resources to build our curriculum out to include rich problem solving tasks and projects to our curriculum for all students. We are going to for next school year add a K five mathematics specialist position. And that will be Larkin Epstein, who's the current fourth grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson, and a part time mathematics coach, Jennifer O'Keefe at the high school. And so these two positions are in addition to our wonderful math specialist, Ms. Sarah Leahy at Henderson currently. So these three mathematics specialists and myself will collaborate around this work and really lead this work. All schools will now have a math specialist as we do have as we have reading specialists. And we'll really work to strengthen our instructional programming and professional learning. We do this anyways, regardless of this initiative or the change in standards. That's just where we are as a district to we're at the place to go even deeper. And so it's 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 nice that this work with the VMPI is happening around the same time. So we're able to fund that K five support math specialist through the CARES funding and the high school coach by being creative with our staffing to make sure that we have positions in place to to do the work that it takes to create that robust mathematics K 12, pre K 12 continuum in our school district. And we are going to be able to begin our catalyzing change book study and professional learning around this work. We were going to start it this year. And then a little thing called COVID happened and we pushed pause on that. But we'll be able to dig a little bit deeper into those books via a book study and some professional learning. And then I continue to work with our region four. We we meet regularly. All the math supervisors from the school districts in the region meet together regularly to make sure that we're aligning across divisions as well, not just within divisions. And we also are working really closely with the state as they develop this initiative even further. So that was a lot of information very quickly. If you have any questions, I will be happy to try to answer them. And if I don't have the answer, I'm happy to find the answer.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I will, we can see if the board has questions. Anybody, Mr. Henderson.
Yes, how do we bring parents up to speed on the new math curriculum and requirements for their students?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Henderson. So I think the video we has put out some community webinars. And I think that as this this is changing very quickly and updates are being made to the initiative. So I think that once they we get a good, once the video we gets a good plan in place, I think we'll be doing some community information sessions. We don't have all the information yet. It's changing. And so I, like I said, what I put on the slide on Friday is not the case, you know, is not what it's what the thing is called today. So I think since we're so far out, we need to let them develop it a little bit further. And as every time that I get updates, I'm happy to provide the board with those small little updates along the way. And then we'll have a bigger picture of what what the whole initiative will look like soon.
Thank you.
Are there other? Oh, oh, yeah. So, Ms. Dr. Ruiz Bolanos, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Charlatan. Thank you, Ms. Sandin. Can you so as a mother of a third grade child who will have these new graduation requirements, can you kind of walk me through at least of what you know or what you think will happen? You know, kind of the compare and contrast if I was if I had a child that was graduating right now versus what happens when she graduates?
Yeah, sure. That's a that's a great question, too. So the the main difference is that she would have more opportunities to explore mathematics topics that are of interest to her in high school. So it won't the courses won't be as limited. So she'll have more opportunities to try and learn new things in high school. So there's not a big difference other than she would be going deeper in each grade level with our with the curriculum because the curriculum revision will be a lot more robust from the the state side and our side. So she would have more robust learning opportunities within the classroom. And then she would still progress through the courses as she would if if this initiative weren't happening. But she would have more opportunities for different courses in the high school.
Can I can I?
It would be that integrated mathematics.
That's that was my follow up. So yes, so right now, a student would go algebra, geometry, algebra two. But instead of doing that sequence like your daughter might do now, she would go course one, course two, right?
Course three. Yep.
Yeah, three, and then on into one of those options with more complexity and depth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Redinger, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much, Ms. Fessenden. It was fascinating to see. I I will say that I very much like the idea of integrated courses, one, two, and three. So avoiding the algebra sandwich. It it always struck me back, you know, it hasn't changed since when I took it. Lo, those many years ago. And it probably is not the best way to teach people whose love of math doesn't, you know, keep them deeply ingrained in everything that's happening. I had a couple of questions about the slide that you put up where there's the the box on advanced mathematics concepts, grade 11 to 12, and then the side by side box on one credit course options. Could you explain, you probably did, but I didn't miss it. I didn't get it exactly, you know, how these two things relate? Are they sort of two sets of options for fulfilling the two additional requirements or more? Or, you know, is it? I just don't really have a sense of how those two boxes connect to one another. And then I have a few more questions.
Sure. Yeah, so students, there are different pathways that students could take. They could take three one credit course options in high school. So basically, in the in the essential concepts course, one, two, and three, they'll receive two high school credits. And then when they move out of those essential concepts into these, well, it used to be called advanced mathematics. Now it's pathway focused mathematics concepts. So when they move into these courses, they they just need to earn three high school credits. And they can choose how they do that. So they could do it, they could take two half credit courses and two full credit, one credit courses. They're they're just the different options of how they could make up their three full credits.
So and that some of the courses on the on the on the right may match with the courses on the left. I mean, they may cover the same things, but they're it's sort of you can you can pick and choose, and you shouldn't, there shouldn't be a whole lot of collision, right?
There shouldn't be any collision. No, there should be a list of one credit course options for students to take and a list of half credit course options for students to take. And then they just have to make up the three credits, and they won't overlap. They'll be separate courses.
I I'm a, by the way, also a big fan of the notion of having those half credit courses that are not really applied mathematics, but are mathematics concepts associated with particular applications. It always struck me as a little odd that we wanted everybody to go through calculus when you know calculus is very valuable, like for physicists and engineers and some other people. But for most people out there, calculus is probably not that important, given what they're going to be doing in their lives and careers. Are that the so that the computer science course is a mathematics course. But in this design, are is one limited to a basic one credit computer science course other than the the half credit, you know, supporting mathematics concepts like discrete mathematics and sets?
So I'm not 100% sure yet. They they are just designing these courses now. And I think that they're not even going to be ready to release one for another year or two. So they're just starting to design these. And I'm not 100% sure what that will look like yet. But as I get updates, I will certainly update the board.
So that's probably, you know, so my kids are all graduating from high school now. And the the thing that that would concern me the most about this approach is if it resulted in while there is a a greater diversity and set of options for advanced mathematics, I don't want to see a retraction in the options that are available for computer science as a part of that program. That also seems to me an area that, you know, we are going to increasingly see a higher diversity of options and a need for options at the high school level as opposed to just taking them more and more in college. So I I my only flag is I'd say I'd like I'd like some eyes on the notion of making sure we don't lose in computer science what we're gaining in mathematics.
Makes complete sense. Thank you.
Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you for for your presentation. It was really interesting, having read about this in the Washington Post. Nice to sort of learn firsthand. I have many questions, and some of these might be premature since this really is the beginning of a long process. Do students in high school, and I have a rising ninth grader, so I'm not so sure about high school. Do students in high school now take four years of math? Are they required to?
Actually, they they're not required to, but many students do take formers of mathematics.
It depends on the diploma type, just to sort of further. If you want an advanced diploma, you need four years of mathematics, but a standard diploma, no. But the vast majority of our of our students in the city of Falls Church take their first high school math course at the middle school level.
Right. Um, I guess the next thing I'm wondering is we are a small school system. And I know that we've changed our math at the high school over the past few years. We only have so many students, and it sounds like we're now going to need to really offer more math options. And I'm wondering how we plan for that. Are we are we just going to be in the position of saying, you know, we can't offer all these math options? So we're going to have to cut some, be they be advanced math options, be the other math options? Or are we building into our planning as this moves forward for us to have more math staffing at the upper grades so that we can offer this for I offer this variety of classes?
So that's a great question and a question that all of us in region four have been talking about when we meet together because there are going to be so many great opportunities for students. And, you know, we think about this as a smaller division, but then in a larger division as well. Look, their high school in the larger division, their high schools offer different courses. So not any high school in all of the Commonwealth will be able to offer all of these courses. And so we're working through ways that we could maybe partner together or think out of the box to offer as many as we can to give students these different opportunities. And maybe it's looking at staffing. It's maybe it's partnering partnering with other districts. We're in, we're having those conversations now because you your your point is spot on.
Thank you. Um, I also noticed that there were half credit classes. And my recollection from pandemic time is weird. I think last year, we were getting rid of all of our half credit classes and moving to all full credit classes. Are we gonna now go back and have half credit classes? How is that okay to do? Is are this changing the norm for math, but everything else is staying the same?
So, yeah, I mean, the the video we will give us the list of options for our school district. And then in in 2025, when this is implemented, we'll have to make a decision whether we order the half the half credit courses or the full credit courses. These half credit courses are really rich courses. So I'm assuming that we would offer these half credit courses. And Dr. Newton, I don't know if you have, you know, want to jump in on on what we can offer. But I would think that we would because these are the courses that are being developed to really go deeply into that mathematics.
I would only add that Dr. Dimick raises a great point, and that is that the state did tell us to move away from full from half credits and that they were no longer going to be accepted. And now they're proposing half credit courses. But again, that's, you know, multiple years down the line. I think that's further clarity we're going to need to receive from the state, whether or not half credits are acceptable in all contents or just in these math concepts. But we'll we'll get that, I'm sure, within the next couple of years, that guidance.
Great. Um, since we're on the subject of math, I wanted to give a big shout out to Ms. Hollinger for running the math club at Henderson. I know the students loved it. It was really wonderful of her to share her time and to organize the Saturday MathCon event. The students really liked that, even if MathCon messed it up and couldn't run their test that day. I grateful to Principal Hardy and Mr. Bates for supporting the math club. I hope it will continue at Henderson. I hear our high school currently has no math club. It would be really nice to see a math club at the high school. I was in the math club at ninth grade at George Mason. It was the only thing I did, um, extra extracurricular wise. And I know a lot of these ninth graders have been rising, ninth graders have been really, you know, they started with Ms. Lang in TJ doing lots of what you talked about, Ms. Fessenden, sort of interesting problem solving things and doing math competitions. And it would be great to see that continued, even if it's, you know, just at a club level through the middle school and into the high school so that our students can continue to compete. We have a really strong robotics program. We are adding our sort of environmental work and sustainability. And I think the the creativity and sort of problem solving around these math competitions fits with what we're doing. And it would be great to see that continue at the high school for these students who are moving through middle school and really interested in this. So thanks for the math club.
Well, anything is possible. And we have our our halftime math coach at the high school now, too. So Jennifer O'Keefe and I will problem solve that and see what we can work up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Mr. Henderson, did you have another question? I see your hand up.
No, I don't have another question.
Oh, okay, great. Ms. Snyder, go ahead.
Thank you. It's been so wonderful to hear about this presentation, especially because there's been a lot of misinformation about the changes in the math curriculum going around the high school. So I think kind of the clarity that will come in the next few months will be helpful. One question that I had was how this would affect IB math for juniors and seniors or whoever's taking it. Right now, I think there's the HL math, and then there are two different SL two year options. So right now, I think most seniors or juniors take IB math. Would this maybe shift more people towards like math that's not based in calculus? And I think one of the IB math options doesn't include any calculus and is more statistics based. So would we keep that class or would that be replaced by this? Or is all of that just too hypothetical?
No, those are great questions, isn't it? Great questions, Ms. Snyder. Nothing that we currently have is being eliminated. So we will not be eliminating anything that we currently have. And you're right, some students might choose that other the other pathway for IB that that doesn't isn't so calculus focused. And and that would agree be a great option for them. It won't change how students access our IB courses or even when they'll access our IB courses. The only thing that I can see it doing is is allowing or opening up the pathway for more students to access IB courses. And it's okay if they access IB courses when they're in 12th grade and not sooner when they're 11th grade. And they might have that robust, those robust mathematics experiences leading up to that IB course that will make it accessible for them where it may not now or not as accessible.
Okay. And then I noticed on the presentation that computer science was listed as a one year advanced course. So would that would IB computer science or AP computer science or whatever classes we already have? Would those count as math classes?
So we kind of have computer science as a whole different department right now in Falls Church City, and that's not going to change. So we'll stay the course of what we're doing now. We'll just offer some more experiences for students.
But those would count as math courses, even though they're in a separate department. So.
Okay. And I also noticed that the pre calculus, there was a one semester pre calculus stuff. Would that replace the year long or would that just be a different option?
So I have to I have to wait to see what the course looks like when it's developed, to see what content is covered. And if it if it already fits in with a with a course that we currently have, then that may not be something that we offer. So once they develop these courses and they we get the information of what standards and what content is in the courses, then we'll be able to determine if it's if it's something that we currently already have or something that we want to offer. So I'm not 100% sure yet because I'm not sure what that half credit would look like yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Nice chair dance.
Thank you, Turlet, and thank you, Ms. Fessenden. I appreciate your presentation. A couple of questions. We we received some emails from, to me, it seemed mostly from actually MEH parents concerned about. So as it is now, if a student wanted to be on the IB diploma track, they would they would really need to take algebra in eighth grade. And so how does this new curriculum? Can you just explain that again? I think there there's some concern just that those, especially those eighth graders are going to be able to hit the math they need to 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 move on to the not I but the diploma.
Sure, right. So nothing is changing with our fourth graders or above. So they're in that AGA, the Algebra, Geometry, Algebra two sandwich. So their progressions are not changing with this initiative or standards revision. So the the changes will happen with the current third graders. And that change will be that they'll be integrated mathematics instead of that algebra, geometry, algebra, algebra two course sequence. So for students who are in Henderson now, nothing is nothing is changing for those students other than we might be able to pilot pilot a new course once they get into the high school if it's if it's released yet. But other than that, their progressions won't change. They'll still have access to the program.
Right, thank you. And then when those TJ students get to MEH, at that point, we'll know there'll be enough rigor and rigorous enough course in eighth grade to put them on that diploma track.
Yes, yes, 100%.
Can I, yes, just to clarify, too. One of the things on on your slide that has the foundational math concepts and the essential math concepts, Ms. Fessenden, you've subsequent or not you, but the state has subsequently taken the grade bands off because you may be able to hit the essential math concepts before eighth grade, which also then allows you to accelerate through the mass sequence as well.
Thank you. I, I do, it's my understanding that I think there was a lot of feedback from all, not just our community, but other communities pushing for that, for that rigor. So that, thank you, I appreciate that. And then I guess my only other question is, so right now, just using my son, for example, who's a ninth grader, he's taking Algebra II. Now, again, I know it's not going into effect right now, but when it does down the road, how does it, how does a high school transcript look for in terms of college admissions? Do we have any idea yet about that?
Um, not a clear picture about that yet, but they, the, the video E is working with degree program, with admissions and degree program requirements with higher ed. So they are part of the partnership and they are working, the universities are changing in the process of changing their admissions criteria and their degree program requirements.
Okay, thank you very much. And I guess actually one last question. As we look at, you know, budgets down the road, are, do you, this is your, you know, Christmas list wish here, and, and your boss is in the room. Are there any things that, you know, as the school board, budget wise, you need some help with as, you know, as we get down the road and implementing a new math curriculum?
Sure. Well, I will say that Dr. Noonan was very, very great about, I did request a K5 math specialist for next year. I, I, it would be very helpful to have a K or a, a math specialist in every building, just as we have reading specialists and a specialist who can lead the work in each building. We're gonna have a lot of work to do with the, in the high school, with the different courses and different mapping and progressions. And so for next year, we do have a halftime math coach. And if we were able to have a full-time math coach in each building to not only build out the curriculum, but provide professional learning opportunities for teachers and co-teach with teachers and model lessons for teachers. And then have that math team along with me really lead this work. That would be very, I think, crucial to a, a smooth transition with a new set of standards. So right now, we do have a math specialist in the middle school, Ms. Sarah Leahy. And so continuing to keep the positions of the K5 math specialists and then increasing the high school position from a part-time to a full-time would, would be ideal. That'd be my Christmas wishlist.
Thank you. It's very helpful. Thank you very much.
And then, of course, more staffing, more math teachers at the high school. This is really my, my wishlist.
You don't get that many wishes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Dance. Uh, Dr. Dimmick, go ahead.
Hi, sorry. I, um, do want to follow up on a question that Ms. Downs raised. Right now, if you have a student who's doing grade level math, if you want to leave the option open for them to do the diploma, that student has to accelerate at some point. So they need to spend a summer taking math, which, which I think we need to better advertise from talking with friends who are, tried to keep the path open for their kids and are realizing, oh, my goodness, where am I going to accelerate them? Looking forward to when these changes are put in place, and it'll be a while from now, do we think we're gonna still need to do that? Or will the changes to this math curriculum mean that students will be more able to proceed into those diploma level classes without needing to add a summer of math to catch up? Catch up to be on track for those classes?
Right. I, I think the intention is that we build out these courses to be rigorous enough that they wouldn't have to. That's, that, that's the goal. Those are the intentions. So if students are receiving rigorous instruction the entire way up, there may be a time that more, there, there may be an opportunity for more students to accelerate than are accelerating now. And so I think that this will provide more students the opportunity to reach those higher level courses with success than are happening now. But that's something that we definitely want to keep on our radar and pay close attention to and really work through those details and those progressions of what it looks like from a third grader starting at TJ, moving up into Henderson, moving up into the high school. It's a whole, it's all connected and we will be looking at that really closely.
Great. Thank you very much.
Can I also just clarify too? One of, one of the things that we want to try to keep in mind as we're, as we're building this out is that if a student is using the math HL combination as one of their HL pathways to get to the diploma, that means that they've likely accelerated through the math sequence earlier in their, in their career because that is a strength area of theirs. But if, if it were just for, as an example, another student who was going through the standard math sequence, they could still get to, to the highest levels of mathematics in IB, even if they started with the first course of the, of the deeper content in eighth grade. It just would, they just may not be able to access HL2, for example. They might do SL1, HL1 and the like, but then pick up two or three other HL sequences to complete their IB diploma requirements. So just, just there's a, there's a lot of combinations within the IB program that get you to your diploma, just so long as you have your HLs in order. So just, just something else to consider. Lots of moving parts.
Great. Other, Mr. Henderson, go ahead.
Yes. What's a HL, first of all?
Sorry about the acronym. HL, HL and SL are two acronyms you'll hear in the International Baccalaureate or IB Program. SL is standard level and HL is higher level.
Okay. Now to my question. A lot has been, okay, first of all, let me just say that I like the, the new design and the segmentation that is breaking it down into, across the spectrum. I think it's a good design. But I have a question about those who are struggling with math. Is there enough support for those that aren't willing to challenge themselves in the upper HL, as you put it? And I'm, I'm concerned about those that might get lost or might even get discouraged at the lower levels. So what support is there for students to maintain a level and then to graduate on time?
That's a really great question, Mr. Henderson. So we, we monitor student progress, obviously, very closely every year. And we use the data to provide support in our tier one core instruction. So that means that when they're in their, in their math class, teachers are using data to differentiate their instruction to make sure that all students' needs are being met. If they find that they're not, we have a multi-tiered systems of support process in place where we can make sure that we're problem solving any, anything, any student that we need to, to make sure that they're being successful in their grade level course. This also, we also have the opportunity to create courses to meet the needs of all students. So these, those options that you have there, like, for example, right now, we have a two-year algebra course that we, that we have created to support students who need more of that algebraic foundation. And so we are still able to create courses and maintain courses to support all students. And hopefully, all of the additions we're adding to our curriculum, the deep problem solving and the logic and, and those rich math learning activities will spark their interest and, and make them lovers of mathematics.
One would hope, yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. And I have a couple of questions, but mine was kind of along the same line as Mr. Henderson. So I think you kind of answered it. But, but just to make sure I understand, if you have a student right now who maybe really struggles with math and, and the level they're supposed to reach by the time they graduate from high school in this new system, is it, is it more rigorous or about the same? Or it's just slightly different in kind of types of concepts it's covering? Or how, how does it compare as far as what's required by the time they graduate?
So I don't think that it's, it's much different from what's required by the time that they graduate, but I think that the rigor might look different with, under the initiative. It, it might, it provides students opportunities to engage in rigorous mathematics that is of interest to them. And we will still provide all of the supports for students that we are now with, under the new set of standards. And so essentially, it's, it's just a new set of standards, an updated set of standards. And the rigor will just look different. It's, it'll, it's a rigor that, they call it low, low floor, high ceiling that allows access to more students to engage in that mathematics in order to make the connections to what, from what they're learning to other things that they've learned so that the connections that they're making stick and they can transfer that knowledge throughout the courses as they progress. So it's just making sure that we're, that the rigor and the mathematics that we're teaching allows for students to make those connections as they progress through the courses instead of being choppy.
Yeah. And, and if I may, I, I would just offer that, you know, whenever I look back at the, at the slide that included the multiple options which, which are included in the pathway, I, I think this helps us to move away from just the misperception that calculus is the rigor, the rigorous math class or the H, you know, the HL is the rigorous math class. And, you know, to the, many of the points or questions that were brought up earlier around, we have students who may engage in mathematics in a different way or may have, maybe looking at future opportunities, whether it's something that they maybe, they want to study in college or they have a general interest in or they want to make a career out of. Calculus might not necessarily be what they need, but there might be other options such as statistics and data analysis or computer science that are very rigorous and require a math sense. But students would have options to go in, in various directions, but still be able to take math courses and receive math credits, but not necessarily go that traditional Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. And really, as, you know, Dr. Dimmick was asking about the progression and, and student preparedness, needing to come into high school traditionally at the Algebra II level in order to take the pre-calculus and then calculus by 11th or 12th grade, but knowing that there, there's multiple options, multiple pathways, these courses will be rigorous and they will allow students to engage in mathematics for all four years, but have a, more of a variety of options based upon their interest.
And I'm, I'm just gonna add on to what Mr. Bates has said and what Ms. Fessenden has said to take it just maybe one step further. Because I think sometimes we will throw around the word rigor. And, and it's not the curriculum that's rigorous. It's how the, how the curriculum is taught that's rigorous. It's the approach to teaching that's rigorous. So it's, so one of the things that we, we need to work with, and I think where Jen's wishlist comes from, Ms. Fessenden's wishlist comes from, is really training our teachers to take a curriculum and make it rigorous. Because I can, I can teach anything and make it rigorous and I can take any content and not have it be a rigorous content. It really is about the questions and the rich tasks and the way that we ask kids to approach the learning and how we approach the teaching. So, so, so I guess all of that to say, I don't want us, us to be welled into this idea that if you achieve this level of mathematics, you've achieved the highest level of rigor. You've achieved the highest level of content that we have to offer, but it may not have been rigorous at all. It may have been pretty routinized and you now have the procedural routines of mathematics down, but don't have any understanding of the mathematics behind it. So I think part of what's happening with this math initiative is it's asking kids in these core programs to really go deeper into the content for depth and complexity that they wouldn't normally get just by going through procedural routines in algebra in geometry and Algebra II. But as Mr. Reitiger said, by blending those and, and having them be in this integrated fashion, you really get a chance to go deeper. So it, it really does create truly what the meaning of rigor is as opposed to a course being rigorous because of the standards. It's not that at all. It's how we teach it and how we approach it. So just food for thought.
Makes sense. Ms. Snyder, go ahead.
Um, so the discussion has brought up another question for me. Will all of the Integrated Math 1 classes be the same? Or will we have some sort of differentiation so that students who are looking for that more rigorous class that has more proofs or like more different thinking would be able to get that? Or would all students take the same Integrated Math 1?
That's a great question, Ms. Snyder. So they, the, they will, the video E will give us the content within Integrated Mathematics Course 1, just like they give us the content within the Algebra course now. And then school districts or divisions will be able to create courses as they wish. So for example, right now, we have an Algebra and we have an Algebra Honors. So once we get that content, we're able to look through it. And, and again, the standards of learning are the minimum, but you know, we can, we can build on to those in any way we wish. So that is a possibility. We, that is something we can look at to see if, if there are different options within the Integrated Mathematics courses.
And Ms. Fessenden, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so yeah, Ms. Snyder, we would, students would take that same Integrated Mathematics course, but they might not necessarily access it at the same time. So you could have a student who is in a younger grade that might be accessing that Integrated Mathematics course at the same time as a student who was taking it in a higher grade, correct?
Yes, but the, yes, then the content, the content within the course would be the same. So the video would, the video would provide us with the standards of learning within that course, within that content, within that course. The content within the course.
But the grade levels were removed.
The grade levels were removed.
Right.
Great. Other questions? I had one other quick question that was more on the here and now. I'm just curious. She said Ms. O'Keefe was going to be working as a math coach part of the time. Curious if that's coaching more of teachers or of students or how you guys are going to use her in that capacity?
It's coaching of teachers. So getting into classrooms and co-teaching and breaking down standards, modeling lessons. And, and she'll be part-time. So she, she'll be a part-time math teacher and a part-time math coach for us and coaching teachers.
Great. All right. Any other thoughts, questions on this topic? All right. Not seen any. I just want to say thank you, Ms. Fessenden and Mr. Bates for being here tonight. This was great. You know, I, I know it's a long road and I think there's some cultural shifts that will need to happen around this. But I, yeah, yeah, it really seems like it's moving in the right direction. So I'm excited about it. So thank you guys so much. Dr. Noonan, did you have any?
Yeah, my only closing thoughts were to just echo, thank you, Ms. Fessenden and Mr. Bates. Lots more to come. And Jen has her ear to the ground, has been a huge advocate for us in this, in our region for sure, but also is a leader in our region and people look to her. So we're very proud to have her on our team.
Great. Thanks to both of you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to 2.02 legal counsel policy. And I believe Ms. Minson was just going to touch base on a couple of things in this area.
Yes, very good. And good evening. Posted on Board Docs is a link to our current policy, which is called Board Counsel, which is bylaw 2.17 in moving from the numbered policies to the VSBA model policies and recognizing the desire of the board and Dr. Noonan to make certain that in my role as legal counsel, I'm counsel for the school board and then the superintendent on behalf of the, of, of school matters, I would recommend that we bring for- I would recommend that we bring for, maybe even waiver of first reading and second reading and adoption, the model policy from the V S B A, which is B C G, which is posted on Board Docs, which is a fairly simple two sentences stating that the board may retain legal, an attorney for legal counsel and services and the attorney may, at the request of the board, attend meetings of the board and its committees. So wanted to bring this during the work session to see if there were questions, concerns, things that I could be looking into between now and next reading and to get the sense of the board, whether this would be a policy you all would like to waive first reading, go straight to second reading adoption or if there are other matters that you'd like me to bring forward as it relates to this policy.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Minson. Does anybody have any questions or anything they want to raise on this matter? All right. Oh, who'd I miss? Oh, Mr. Reitinger, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I took a look at the policy and I have to say, I think it's, it's probably the right level of precision. There's, there's going to be statutory requirements and practice requirements for, you know, when people, when the school board or the school administration will need to provide attorneys for, if people get sued in their official capacity. I think the, the high level two sentence statement states the policy properly and everything else can be left to the operation of law and to elements like the contractual arrangements with the school board attorney. So my, my preference would be to go ahead and move it over to the more up-to-date policy to waive first reading and proceed directly to second reading and be able to vote on it at the next board meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Henderson, go ahead.
Oh, yes. I thought that the, the policy, at least as it's stated in the bylaws, was too simplistic. We had some discussion about the, the policy in closed session. And it seems to me that the council for FCC P S is FCC P S's counsel. And should not be used for a personal counsel, whether that be the superintendent or some other individual. To say that the school board can retain counsel, why should the school board retain counsel when the school system is paying for the services of an attorney as counsel? And the way that it was put forth, but it sounded like Trish would be representing the superintendent in negotiating his contract.
I appreciate you raising that and I would not be representing the superintendent in negotiating the contract under the model policy B C G and currently under by law 2.17. I, I would not be doing that. My role would be, as it says at line five of B C G, the school board may retain an attorney for legal counsel and services. My understanding of that is that would be me. I am the attorney for the school board until such a time as the board would like other counsel or unless there's an event where multiple attorneys are needed or insurance covers outside counsel for a matter.
Yeah, and I saw Dr. Noonan's statement as well saying that there was some confusion that he would retain his own counsel. But I just want to be clear of the policy going forward so that we don't have to go over this again at any time in the future.
And Mr. Henderson, I, I do believe that this policy is, you know, it's high level and I do think it's, it, it's clear on what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. I just had that question and if I can be assured that it is what you said, then I'm okay with it. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there other, any other questions or comments on this issue? All right. Seen none. I think we can move on to 2.03 Boundary Line Adjustment and I will turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you. I'm gonna quickly turn it over to Ms. Minson here. But before I do, I just wanted to let the board know that we have made some pretty good headway in terms of the movement around the demolition, obviously the demolition of the high school and the clearing of the trapezoid next door. To the extent that the trapezoidal area that our school parking lot will be on has been completed. We now are bringing, or Gilbane is now bringing in a company to do some surveying of it. They will give us some feedback on that when that's done. But this, what Ms. Minson's going to talk about tonight is the boundary line adjustment for that additional quarter acre of land that's in the trapezoid that the city government would like to have as part of their Phase Two process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Minson.
Very good. And thank you, Dr. Noonan. Included on Board Docs tonight is a brief summary of what will be before the board for an action item at its next meeting on June 8th. As Dr. Noonan noted, there is a request to take, I believe it's 0.33 acres that's part of the trapezoid and have it be part of Phase Two, an office building that would include parking. And because of, this would be a land transfer, there is a deed that would adjust the boundary line. That is the fourth bullet point that's down. There are also a few other moving parts because the school board currently owns land that would be part of that project and because the school board is an adjacent neighbor, there's a few actions the city would be looking for us to take. One is for the school board to approve the Special Exception Entitlement Amendment. That would be via a motion that would take place on the 8th. There's also the request that the school board chair get authorization to sign the Phase One S E S P, the Special Exception Site Plan, which is part of, there's a plat that's involved that shows that this is the use of the land that the parties would like to go forward. There's also a lot line adjustment application that includes a plat showing the re-subdivision of that piece of the trapezoid parcel and two items that are still being drafted, but that we will have, actually three items that are still being drafted. One is we entered into a parking memorandum that we've been calling the Tripartite M O U or with the city, the schools and Falls Church Gateway Partners recognizing that when Phase Two goes forward, we will be losing some of the parking in the trapezoid piece. And so to coordinate parking both during the current demolition phases, to make sure there's enough parking for students and staff and then going forward, when part of the trapezoid then goes forward in Phase Two to build the office building and parking, the M O U right now does have that we will get replacement spaces in that parking garage that's being built. We need to revise that parking M O U because right now it refers to a smaller plot T1 of what's being kind of portioned out of the trapezoid piece that now will be T1 plus 0.33 acres. So we want to revise the parking M O U. We also, in that revision, will make clear that not just will we get back the number of spaces that we lose, but if there's any spaces that are lost due to egress or ingress, turning around of cars, those will be replaced. So we're working with outside counsel Jeremy Root to revise that and hoping that that can be something that we, the city and Falls Church Gateway Partners have ready to go at the June 8th meeting. Right now, under the existing parking M O U, we are using and developing part of the trapezoid that is technically the city's land. So the city had contemplated giving us an easement, a temporary parking easement in talking with Carol McCoskeri. I think she wants that to be a lease that just outlines who, who uses the park property for what reasons, who has insurance that covers the property. So that lease might be forthcoming or that lease might be amended to incorporate the parking, the revised parking M O U. So those are two pieces that relate to parking and relate to that area that we hope to have ready for June 8th. And then the final piece is the city is putting together a statement recognizing that the purpose of the school board changing the boundary line adjustment is solely for this new building in Phase Two that will include parking. And if for some reason Phase Two doesn't go forward, that the city does intend that lane to stay the school board trapezoid piece. So it's an assurance to the school board that it's really just going to be used for this purpose. And if that purpose doesn't go forward, then the board, the land would come back to the board. That's kind of perfunctory because as a practical matter, the land that the old high school sat on was owned by the city for a while and there was never an issue. But I, I think it's just helpful to memorialize, given that there are a lot of moving parts with where the land is, where the boundary line is being adjusted, who's operating, what portions the land. So just to make it clear that the board would be asked on June 8th in addition to approving the S E E amendment and the S E S P Phase One of agreeing to a boundary line adjustment and ceding or transferring one-third of an acre to the city for purposes of that new office building. I know that's a lot of information. The, the city has shared this over the course of the past few months. I know that Falls Church Gateway Partners has come to a number of board meetings to talk through this plan, but we wanted to have that all in front of the board. In the event there are any questions this evening or questions between now and the board meeting on June 8th, especially recognizing that tends to be a pretty busy board meeting with a lot going on of recognizing staff and students. So did want the opportunity to present that now if there were questions or comments that either I could answer or that we could take back to the city and get answered for you all prior to action being taken on June 8th.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Minson. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Henderson?
People are throwing around the term trapezoid, but geographically, where is this?
So the trapezoid is due east of Mary Ellen Henderson, on the other side of Mustang Alley. So as Mustang Alley traverses past Henderson, past the high school and then turns to the right, if you're coming off of Route Seven, it's on the right-hand side of Mustang Alley. So you would, you would see right now bulldozers and it's kind of where the old shop was and some, some areas at the high school there.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Henderson?
Probably not. Let's put up a graphic for you so you can, so you can see exactly what we're talking about. The reason we affectionately call the trapezoid is because that's sort of the, the shape of the new parking lot that's going in there. So if you look at this visual on, and you see the high school along Route Seven, that's where the old shop is, is where the cursor is. That's Mustang Alley. And the trapezoid is to the right of the cursor. So she's going to outline it now. It's kind of right in that area. Can you see that, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where the school bus is used to park and some of the science wing was there.
So that's not going to be part of the new development?
No, that'll be our, our parking until such time as Phase Two happens. And in Phase Two, a portion of that would be used for development, but they would replace our parking spaces in their new development.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Oh, great. Let's see. Okay, I see. Thank you.
Great. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I just had a, Ms. Minson, thank you very much. I just had a question out of curiosity. If the developers don't go, decide not to go with Phase Two, is there a certain deadline that, you know, once we get back past 2030, do we know? So at any time they could go for it?
I actually would like to get some clarity around that because I, I do think that there is some language in there about timing, but let us get back to you on that question.
And then the other question for you is for you, Dr. Noonan. I know you began by talking about the school coming down and, and work towards getting ready for the trapezoid parking lot. I do remember there was a little bit of a discrepancy or maybe disagreement might be a strong word, but my understanding is that for that to be ready for the trapezoid parking lot, that the soil has to be compacted and graded. And there was a discrepancy, I think, between Gilbane and Falls Church Gateway Partners. And I know we want to be good partners with the city, but I'm just curious what is happening with that.
Thank you. It's a great question and perhaps maybe the best way to describe it is a discrepancy of expectations as opposed to a disagreement perhaps. Regardless, you're right. There is a certain element of compaction. The soil on the trapezoid site needs to be compacted at 95%. And the city has told the Falls Church Gateway Partnership that they need to compact it to 90%. As, as opposed to having the Falls Church Gateway Partnership compact it to 90% and then have Gilbane come in and have to dig it all out. It was agreed that the Falls Church Gateway Partnership would leave the land as demolished and not do any grading work or any compaction, but instead leave that for Gilbane. So this week and next, Gilbane is going to come in and survey the topography on the ground, determine what the, the levels are or what the grade set is and determine what the work is to, the earthwork is necessary to get it to 95% compaction. At that point, they'll pass on that charge to our, to us and we will share it with the city. Our expectation is then, is that the general government will go to Falls Church Gateway Partners and say, here's what the cost is to get to 95%. We, we would like you to offset that. And then, and then we'll begin that conversation. But it does sound like, to a great extent, the city and general government has been very, very good in helping us sort of move forward with this, with this process. I imagine that there will be down the line, another discrepancy and expectation that we will have to sort of work our way through to, to some degree. And we're trying to figure out exactly what that, what that will look like. But we won't know until we know what the cost is to set the grade and do the compaction.
Thank you very much.
But we've come a long way since the last time we brought this up.
Thank you, Ms. Fans. Do we have other, Ms., Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
I thank you for the, for the information, the presentation. I noticed in one of the pieces of information about the signage for the hot lanes. And I remember that came up earlier and, and I guess there was an issue, but perhaps the signage would be right in front of our school complex. And I'm wondering if we've made any progress on the placement of the hot lane sign.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Michael to take that question because she was at the last infrastructure meeting where that was contemplated.
And we are continuing with our infrastructure meetings with another one scheduled for tomorrow morning. So currently, the sign for the hot lanes is located in the middle of the median of Route Seven here. And as part of the design for Falls Church Gateway Partners, they're actually adding another lane to Route Seven. And when that happens, the median will become narrower. So the sign for the hot lanes will no longer fit in the median because it's too narrow. So they came back originally and proposed that it get placed like right here in the middle of the sidewalk pathway, which we do not support. So we are working, what they've been told in terms of V dot is to submit a plan and then they'll get feedback back. So we're really working with them on alternative locations for where that sign could go. One of the options that we really like is putting it back here where this building will be in the future, right? Knowing that if that building doesn't get built till 2028 or 2032, the sign could be moved at that point in time. We also talked about, could it be located here closer to Route 66 and in some of this grassy median, but not directly in the walkway? So we will continue to work with the general government who's engaging other people to help with this design to submit the plan to V dot. So it's super critical to us that we locate this in a place that, that really does not impede our school access, which is our key concern. Student safety is always at the top of every conversation we have with the infrastructure meeting. And then there is one other great piece of good news. Do, do you want to share?
We, we have received confirmation that we are going to be able to take a right onto Mustang Alley off of Route Seven. That's sort of a big deal for us because it means we can actually access the site this summer because Mustang Alley on the Haycock side is going to be under some construction. But we're working on getting a Winko Matic, which is a flashing beacon light that will go along Route Seven before you can take that turn. But that will definitely help with flow, not only the summer, but into next year as well. You'll be able to take a right onto Mustang Alley. It's the small things, ladies and gentlemen. It's the small things.
Excellent. All right. Other question, Mr. Redinger, go ahead.
Thank you, Charlene. Just briefly, I guess I'm more concerned than anything else about contingencies. Both the contingency if the building doesn't get built and the contingency if it does and then something else happens. I, I think the contingency if the building doesn't get built, you've already addressed. You know, the way I would put it is, you know, the understanding with the city needs to be such that, you know, the, I care less about formal control and more understanding or formal ownership and more about understanding of control. You know, if, if something happens in a few years and nobody on this board is on that board and, you know, nobody on the city council is on the city council, it's easy to forget that. So, you know, both an understanding and a way to memorialize that effectively is, I think, very important. The, the part about if the building does get built, I think it needs to be ironclad. And, you know, I'm not going to be the contract lawyer on this, but it needs to be very, very clear that, you know, we get the same number of parking spaces every time. It seems to me that Ms. Minton's conversation goes that way. I just want to make sure we do, or I should say the, the administration does some threat modeling. Like what if the building gets built and then in 20 years they're going to tear it down and put something else? And the new building is going to replace the parking lot. I, I just want people to really, you know, I want it, I don't want the requirement of giving the parking spaces to be written in a way or in a document that's vitiated, depending on what happens in development in the future. So whether that, you know, is a condition of development or a separate contract, I'm not sure. But I, I think we need to think through, you know, what might happen in 2040 to make sure that we still have parking for our teachers and staff.
Understood, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Are there other questions? All right. Not, I'm not seeing any. All right, then we can move on to our next agenda item. 2.04, student tuition for staff members.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This evening, what we've prepared for presentation is a regulation. And nine times out of 10, because the regulation, our superintendent's purview, we don't bring regulations for review. But since we believe that this regulation will likely turn into a policy of some sort, we wanted to share it with you. And, and because it's also a pilot that we are recommending. So tonight, what we're bringing to you is a non-resident employee student tuition rate waiver pilot program. And this comes from the conversation that we had a couple of work sessions ago, or maybe one work session ago, where we, we did quite a bit of conversation regarding allowing some of our teachers or staff to be able to bring their students in to the city of Falls Church Schools. So I'm going to turn it over here in just a second to Ms. Minton to walk through it. But I do want to share with the board, as you, as you hear this tonight, if you'll keep it in the frame of this is a pilot, to see how it goes. Because there are some fairly restrictive pieces to this. But part of the reason that we are restricting some of the language in this, this time is because it's our first time out doing anything like this. And we want to be able to modify it, adapt it and utilize some of the language that's here going forward, should we have a successful process. The last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Ms. Minton is that with the approval, we are going to seek your approval at the June meeting to ask, to ask you to actually vote on doing this pilot. But I do want to be clear that this will go out also in Spanish. So it'll be available to our staff members that speak Spanish. We'll also get it, we'll also get it translated as necessary for our other employees so that there aren't any questions about who is eligible and who isn't. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Minton.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. So in putting together this regulation, I looked at a lot of other school divisions. There are many school divisions in the Commonwealth that do allow students of staff members to attend the schools. Many of those larger divisions do that for free. There's not as much of an economic impact on the school division to add one student here or five or six students to, to a given school. So looking at other divisions and how the work was done, some allow for a reduced rate of tuition. So I looked at our current tuition policy for students and made some tweaks to it and otherwise wanted that to apply to, to the students of non-resident employees. On the last page of the regulation, you'll see there's the employee tuition rate chart. This chart is looking at what the board has adopted for the 2021, 2022 school year. And the tuition rates are cut in half. However, the gifted service charge and the special education service charge will be charged at full freight, just as it is charged for tuition students. And there would still be the same full fee for student parking athletics and for summer computers. The one item from the tuition students that is not brought over here is $150 application fee. We thought it made sense to waive that during this first time pilot program, particularly given that there's a pretty short turnaround. The board brought this to our attention in April, asking if it was something that we could do with the April work session. So was trying to put together something quickly, recognizing that we didn't quite have enough time to even survey staff to say who would want to do this. We also gave some thought to how do we let this go as a pilot and have some limitations on it so that we can see, does this make sense? Does it work? Is this something the board would want to do? Since other divisions who do this do have it as a policy. So I've structured this as a regulation that would become a policy hopefully. And if the board is amenable to continuing this program in the late fall or early spring so that staff would have more advanced notice of what the expectations are, if the board at that point in time wants to open it up to more staff members or to continue in a lottery system to add the application fee or other things, the board, we could certainly do that via a policy. But as it's structured right now, there will be a one-year kind of conditional enrollment of up to five students of staff members. And those five students, we're asking that the parent or staff member completes an application and submits that to us. We're going to have it by June 15th. So we will fan out this draft regulation to staff beginning tomorrow, if that's amenable to the board in both English and Spanish. So staff can have some time to give some thought. Recognizing, I do expect we will have maybe up to five folks apply, but this is kind of late notice for the 2021, 2022 school year. So folks have maybe already made plans and staff might also be a bit wary to commit to this, knowing that it might not continue in the future. So recognizing it is a pilot program, there are a lot of what ifs, but I do think that we would have a number of staff members who would be interested in this, even if, though it might just be limited to the one year. But staff will complete an application, will do a lottery system where five students' names are selected and then a more full application, which would include review of the student scholastic record and disciplinary records would then be submitted by those five students and their families. The superintendent will then go to the principals, make sure that there's space at the buildings and at those grade levels for those students. The principal might, often when we have tuition students apply, the principal will sit down with the student or with the parents and get a better understanding of why they want to come to the school. So it'll be a similar process is that the names would be brought before the school board, just as tuition student names are brought enclosed. So we would anticipate that that would happen likely in July. So the staff members would know, we're putting these names forward for the school board. The school board would still approve those students as it, as the school board does approve tuition students. And then the remainder of the policy, I'm sorry, regulation outlines similar to what the current tuition policy requires. When payment is made, if the student's family become residents, notification of the school, that then they would no longer be a non-resident tuition student. If there are some disciplinary concerns or other issues that come up, it would be within the principal's purview to withdraw the student status as even the half rate tuition student. So wanting to present this to you today in response to the April work session, see if you think this is what the board would like us to do going forward, recognizing that it is a regulation and typically those are at the purview of the superintendent. But as Dr. Noonan said, this would be the board asking the superintendent at the June 8th meeting to move forward with this pilot program to gather information and see if this is something that the board would want to move into a policy after the, the trial period or once we see how much interest there is and get some feedback from, from staff and community members. So happy to answer questions about this regulation now. Also happy between now and June 8th to think through scenarios with you and see if there are other concerns or questions that need to be addressed in the form of this regulation so that if it is put out to staff, we, we have some of those ideas of where we're going forward.
Great, thank you, Ms. Noonan and Doc, Ms. Noonan, sorry, Ms. Minton and Dr. Noonan. And thanks for putting this together. I know we kind of handed you guys a big open question on this, that we wanted to do something. So we appreciate you guys narrowing it down and putting it into a workable form. So thank you on that. I will go ahead and open it up to questions, comments, thoughts. Mr. Redinger, go ahead.
Thank you, Charlene. My, my first question, this may lead to some comments, but is, Ms. Minton, could you explain a little bit more how the, the application in the lottery system works? Because as I read through the policy, it, it mentions the lottery system twice. But for example, the first reference is just subject to the lottery system. And before that, it says the superintendent will select the applicants. Is it, who, what, what are the, what are the gates and how are people selected? If you have, you know, 10, if you have four people to apply, then that's pretty straightforward. But if you have 10 people who turn in applications, how do you get to the five?
Our anticipation, Mr. Redinger, to if, if we had more than five applicants would be essentially to draw them randomly. And then if there were space available, we would move forward with those applicants. However, if there was not space available, we would draw the next applicant. So we would pull all of the applicants, put them in order. So for example, if you were number three on the list and your name came up and you were applying for a fifth grade spot, but it turned out that there was no room at the fifth grade, the person who was in the fourth position would move up to the third position and you wouldn't be eligible to participate in this pilot. And we can certainly spell that out in the regulation if that would be helpful.
I, I just think, I, I couldn't tell that that was the process to be used. I, I think that's a lot of, a lot of process to be hinged on subject to the lottery process. So I, you know, I don't think we need a full detailed, you know, tick list of the different things that will happen. But I think it, it ought to be a little bit more deeply explained. The, which leads me to sort of a substantive comment, which is I, I, I get the fairness of that. I think one thing we would need to recognize is there are also cases where it's not that fair. And there may be stronger reasons for one staff member to have a person at the school than another. But that leads to problems in terms of selecting among staff. And so I just, I wanted to raise the flag that, you know, we're then saying, you know, it's mildly convenient for someone, but a teacher won't be able to stay working here under, you know, if their student is not able to come because the person may have needs and they need to be nearby. So if we're willing to leave that to random chance, and maybe we are because of, it's just too hard to go otherwise, that, I, I want to be clear about that.
Thank you for, for that feedback. And I, I do, I do understand and take your point. My, my sense of it, having done lottery type systems in other divisions, is that when you open that door, it does become very, the perception is it becomes very subjective. And if there isn't very clear criteria and the example that you, you know, used of, of, you know, the people, person may not be able to work here anymore. Then do we get in to, okay, if you're more than five miles and on a public, you, you kind of get the idea, but it does become subjective, but I do take your point, thank you.
Let me, let me just say one thing. I, I, I think you raise a very good point, Dr. Noonan. I, I only ask, and I'm not going to say that this ought to be the case, whether there should be a, you know, a two-tier system. In other words, that for exceptional circumstances, that a person could be exempted from the lottery. And then the expectation is that other than exceptional circumstances, everyone would go into the lottery. And I, I don't know if that's a good idea or not. You've certainly got a lot more experiences than I do. I just, it would appeal me to have, appeal to me to have the opportunity if there is in fact a bona fide substantial and, you know, incontrovertible differences of circumstances that that could be taken account in some way.
Thank you. I understand.
Ms. Downs, go ahead. Thank you, Charlene, and thank you, Ms. Minton. I, I agree with Mr. Renger in terms of the, I guess, minor a little bit. First of all, thank you for bringing, I know this is a regulation, not typically something we look at. So thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to offer some feedback. And there's just, I think, a little bit, well, I guess first, is the application that's attached, is that the general application we use for tuition waiver?
For tuition students.
I mean, that's right. So one suggestion I had, this is totally sort of off subject, but I was reading through the application and I was wondering on the questions where we keep saying, has your son, daughter, son, daughter? Could we make that gender neutral and just say your child?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so that wasn't, but I just, that just occurred to me as I was reading through it. So, so I guess when I was reading the regulation, it looked like there was a discrepancy between the regulation and what's on this application. Like, for example, the application says documents should be attached to the application, but when you look at the regulation, it says documents can come, I think, 30 days later. So I think there's just maybe a little bit of, and then like you, as you said, Ms. Minton, we're waiving the fee, but this, so I, so I think there's just a little bit of this, you know, discrepancy, just have to clean up. But I do agree with Mr. Renger, it seems like there's a lot of, as, when I was reading through section 5.6, it looked like the school board approves the candidates, then it goes to the principal, then it comes back to the school board. So it just seemed like, it was, it seemed like a pretty involved process. So I don't know, you know, what, but for, for a first go at it, I think it's great. I love the idea of it. I love the, you know, being able to give our staff a, you know, a benefit, a human resource benefit of having their children come to school here. So I really appreciate Ms. Minton and all the work you've put into this. Thank you.
Sure, one item for what's on the application for the attaching of documents, recognizing we have such a short timeframe and that we would be asking staff to pull together a whole lot of materials, not knowing how many staff are going to apply. It could be a whole lot of work for staff and then their name isn't drawn on the lottery. So we can, we can adjust this application and make it be just for the non, non-resident students of staff members and tweak that. But certainly this underlying application for tuition students, we can also make the change to student or child from the phrase son or daughter.
Right, thank you. I figured there was just a little bit of tweaking to make this application more applicable to what we're talking about. But I think it's, it's, looks great to me. And yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea and I really am very much in support of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Downs. Are there other? Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Charlene. I'd like to just say thank you very much, Dr. Noonan and Ms. Minton, for your work on this because I know that this came up and was turned around very rapidly. I recall our conversation about this at the last point. There was, I was pushing a bit for this to happen quickly and then there was sort of a feeling like maybe I had asked for something that was impossible and yet it sits before us. So thank you, that was, that's impressive. I, I agree with Mr. Redinger and Vice Chair Downs that making, making clear the things that are applicable under the pilot as much as we can is helps, is really important. And in particular, the lottery system. I, I won't belabor the point because Mr. Redinger summarized basically where I was going with that as well in terms of documenting it a bit and explaining what that means. As to the idea of having in some way the concept of special circumstances. I, I think I would agree with it, the ability to have that special circumstance would be a good thing to have. But I understand the attendant sort of risk of subjectivity seeming to be, be an issue. If it involves, as it does in paragraph five, starting on line 50, approval by the school board of, of a special exception, sort of a situation. To me, in some way, that alleviates the concern about sort of unfairness entering into the process because it gives the board the role of sort of thinking about this at the, at the, the high level. Doesn't, it doesn't entirely eliminate it, but for me, I feel like there might be more benefit than risk. So I don't know, that's sort of where I would be inclined. Overall, though, I have to say thank you very much. I, I like what you've got here and I, I think this is going to be a really good thing for us to be able to offer to our staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Henderson. I believe your hand's up.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I want to thank Trish for bringing this about in such a speedy way. I know it's just a pilot, so we're really thinking out loud, aren't we? And trying to figure out where we want to go with this. So the George Mason annual tuition of 11,000, that's at 50%?
Yes, that's correct. The tuition for non-resident tuition students, as it stands, as adopted by the board, as part of the budget process, is 22,000. So 11,000 is one half that amount.
That's quite hefty. Yeah, you know, even at, well, I think, first of all, the, the number of five, limiting the five, is low. And of course, it would depend on a number of variables, including applicants that will pay full price, State Department students. I imagine the State Department, they pay full price. And the fact that, are we paying teachers enough to come up with this tuition? That they would be able to afford to bring their child to Falls Church under these circumstances?
Mr. Henderson, I, we would want, first of all, we'd want to open this up to everybody, not just teachers. So I would say also staff. And I do think, I do think that for some of our staff, the 11,000, not knowing what their familial constellation is, might be a hefty price tag. We had contemplated at one point a sliding scale, but trying to figure that out was going to be a little bit more complicated than we anticipated as we got into the pilot. So, so I, I don't know, not knowing everybody's familial constellation or their debt, it's hard for me to know. I would say that $11,000 for tuition in each circumstance is sort of person dependent.
Okay, I know we're, this is not a final document yet. You know, this is a draft, right? And, but I still think there's some things we need to think about, including the sliding scale.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. I think it's a work in progress. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Chair Litten. One question that I have is, how would this work for staff members who have multiple children who they would like to attend Falls Church City schools? Would they be entered into the lottery together or separately? Or how would we go about that? And also, how would tuition maybe work for that? Because if you're paying for like two students' tuition, then that would start to get more.
That's a very good question, Ms. Snyder. As this is written, the lottery, and I, we do need to add more clarification around the lottery. But what was contemplated is it would be student by student, so each student's name would be pulled out. So if a staff member did have more than one child, there's a chance that one child might be admitted and one would not. In that situation, the staff member could decide to send one child and not the other children, or could withdraw their child, and then the spot would go to the next child who's in line under the lottery. But it would be on a student by student admission, not as a full family. And the, the rate of the tuition would be, as it's written now, the, the full rate based on what is charged at each school. And that number that the board had adopted for the tuition students is based on what the spending is on each student. So just like the gifted charge and the special education's charge is the actual amount that we spend on students. The school breakdown of tuition is what the cost of the schooling or the education is per student. So there is a reduction of that by half under, under this proposed regulation. But there would not be a further reduction if multiple students were enrolled. At this time, based on this regulation, as it's written, recognizing the pilot can give us a fair amount of information of what the board might want to do going forward, and that would be up to the board to advise how they would like that policy written and to work on that policy if the board wanted to continue offering this as a, as a benefit to employees. So this is an imperfect and quick turnaround solution that we hope can offer some information about what might work. And we'll pose some questions of how can we do this going forward in a different way? But we did want to be responsive to the request last month and, and appreciate you understanding that this is imperfect. But what we think might allow us to gather some more of that information so that the board could move towards a policy in the very near future.
Thank you so much.
Chair Litten, I have just one other quick question. And thank you. I think it's, it's a great, strong first start for us throwing this in your lap. On section 10, I didn't know if we wanted to add something about, this is the section that talks about a student having to be removed. What happens with that tuition? Is it refunded or it's not refunded? I don't think we have that language in there.
That's a good point. We'll, we'll clarify that. Do you have a preference?
Okay. I'll leave it up to you. Thanks.
We would likely prorate the tuition.
Great, thanks. Are there, Mr. Reiter, go ahead.
As, as the topic of things like sliding scales for fees came, come up, I, I, besides reiterating, I, I think, I think the administration, and you in particular, Ms. Vincent, did a wonderful job on this for an interim policy. I, I, I think the, the, the comments that we've heard about wanting to look at a sliding scale are absolutely right. That said, I, I think the real goal here is to move with sufficient expedition so that we can get some data and help out staff that maybe have, you know, really exigent circumstances. And so I think for a one-year program, you know, the, the initial criteria of stepping out with a half tuition cut is a, is a reasonable ballpark. I think you could do it different ways. But that strikes me as, as well within the bounds of reasonability. And if we then go after, for, when we have a program and have a little more data, and have a sliding scale that reduced that amount for some, that's great. I would be really troubled if we started off with a sliding scale and we said, no, we can't really afford this. We need to go back to a 50% pay, and then we, you know, raise the rates for staff who had already moved their kids. So I, I think we ought to be cautious and conservative in implementing the program the first time while really trying to meet staff needs. And so I, I think the, the judgment calls that Ms. Vincent and superintendent and staff have made on this make a lot of sense. I also, since you just raised it, Dr. Noonan, I think prorating tuition, if a student has to leave the program for disciplinary reasons, makes sense.
Ms. Litten, one thing we could, listening to the comments, I appreciate that, Mr. Reiter. And I'll also fill in one potential solution on the sliding scale idea. And I, and I agree, I wouldn't want to have somebody go to a sliding scale and then say we can't afford it and come back. But in order for us to get some good data, what if, what if we did 0.25 for students that were eligible for free and reduced lunch? Then that gives us some sliding scale. Okay, all right, we could add that language.
Do we have other, other comments, questions? Not seen any. I would just like to echo actually Mr. Reiter's original concern. You know, I, I think the concern that a person with extenuating circumstances brought this forward, and I'm afraid they're not going to get a spot. But I do understand like the, the need for fairness. So, you know, I think that may just be an issue we, we're not able to address this time. But we continue to think about if there's a way to maybe have a couple slots for, for people with severe extenuating circumstances, that we'd want to consider something. So yeah, I would just say that I think that's something we should continue to think about. And otherwise, I would just say thank you guys so much for bringing this forward. Sorry, Kristin was raising her hand. Any, any final thoughts or questions on this? All right. Not seen anybody, just big kudos to both of you, for everybody who worked on this. I know it was a heavy lift in a short amount of time. So, thank you so much.
Nobody types faster than Tricia Vincent.
Was that talks or types?
It's a both.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, 2.05 is our monthly budget monitoring report.
And I'll, I'll turn it over to Kristin Michael, our chief operating officer, for an update.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the monthly financial report for April, which is month 10. Michelle Koppick, who is in Florida, celebrating her daughter's college graduation, gets a huge kudos for doing the work of pulling together the report and completing the projections for year end. So what I have displayed on the screen is our summary chart, and I'm going to talk through the summary chart. Just as a reference and a reminder to help people, in the very far left under type, top is revenue, the bottom are expenditures, that's the R and the E. Then we break them down by the category, right? That's the grouping of revenue or expenditures. We show what the budget is for the year, the actual, which are the actual revenue received to date or the actual expenditures occurred to date, and this report is as of April 30th. Then we have encumbrances. Encumbrances are purchase orders, their obligations that we've made to vendors, either for services or goods, where we've committed to pay for them, but we haven't yet received them. So those encumbrances are there. Then it shows what's the available budget. So on the revenue side, that negative number is revenue that we budgeted for and not yet received. Or on the expenditure side, it's the expenditure budget that we still have not yet expended. Then it shows what that percentage available is. Then we walk through what are we projecting for the end of the year? And how does that compare to our budget is the variance column at the end. So first, I'm going to walk through the actual revenue and expenditures, and then I'm going to come back to the projections. So when we look at other revenue through April, that revenue received totals $278,712. So that's the first line of revenue. When you look at other revenue, the largest category there is tuition, just like we were talking about, that we charge to families who live outside of Falls Church City, who students enroll. The majority of that is from George Mason High School. And then we have students at Jesse Becker preschool that are community peers. So when we look at that other revenue, nearly 181,000 of that revenue is coming from tuition. And the other, other revenue that we budget for is from stop-arm cameras for our school buses. Every school bus has a stop-arm camera. We budgeted that revenue at $55,000 this year. That's actually below the level that we were receiving in prior years. And to date, we've collected 32,300. I always say we are collecting revenue, which is good. This is revenue we really don't like to receive, because we would prefer that everyone stops and does not drive around a bus with the stop-arm camera down, because it's a student safety issue. But the data is good in terms of, we don't tend to have people who do it multiple times. Then the last item in this category of other revenue is for rental of school property. And this current school year, due to COVID, we haven't been doing rental of our properties. So we have not collected any of that $40,000 that we budgeted. But we are working to reestablish community use of our facilities, starting in July. The second line is use of fund balance, and we post that at the end of the year. So when we develop our budget, we're planning on spending some fund balance. So you see that as 450,000. The next line is state. State revenue is comprised of two categories. The first is state aid. The largest source of that is basic aid, and that's based on our students. And then also, our ability to pay is calculated through the local composite index. And I know we've talked a lot about this year, we had fewer students than we projected. But there is a hold harmless provision for the state, so that revenue is really coming in as we had budgeted. The bright picture and all of our revenue is the other component in state aid, which is sales tax. Sales tax in April is from February, so we're always two months behind in terms of collecting that revenue. And when we adopted the budget this year, as I know I've stated previously, we had nothing to base our sales tax projections on, because last May, we knew COVID had hit, but we had no updated projections from the state. So we planned for a 10% reduction in sales tax. But sales tax in February was actually 9% higher than last year. So we were spending it 9% higher than last year pre-COVID. So currently, our sales tax revenue is tracking at 31.7% higher than budgeted. And you can clearly see that in the variance column here. And that is the impact of sales tax, which has truly been a bright beacon. And our budget for next year has incorporated that increase in sales tax revenue, because the state projections were taking into account the sales tax revenue that they're seeing in this current year. Next is federal revenue. Federal revenue to date is $880,619. When we look at that funding, the two big components coming from that funding are CARES Act funding, basically stimulus funding of about 453,000. And then the other larger component in terms of federal revenue is from IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And that funding, when we look at that funding, it's a reimbursable grant. So we will fully expend that and receive all of that revenue that we budgeted. Hence, the projection that will have no variance in terms of what we budgeted for the year. So then the last two categories are the general government transfer, that always gets posted in the last month of the fiscal year. And we expect to fully receive that revenue for this year. And then the last line, interfund transfers, those are transfers between FCCPS's funds. So that $130,000, the largest portion of that is a charge that we do each year to our daycare program for indirect costs. So because they're operating in our schools, we're using things like custodial services, electricity and those components. And we do not intend to charge them this year for that component. When we look at daycare for the majority of the year, they were providing other services, including supervised virtual learning. So when you look at the variance in our interfund transfers, that's a variance of $100,000. So overall, when we look at the variance for revenue, our other revenue is projected to be low based on, on three different components, that community use of our facilities that I mentioned, our stop-arm cameras. And then the other component there is grant revenue that we budget for is flexibility. So that's that variance. Fund balance, we've currently shown that we wouldn't spend any of it. And then we have that excess sales tax and our interfund transfers being 100,000 short. So overall, we're projecting at the end of the fiscal year that our revenue will be about 200,000 lower than we budgeted. So we move into the expenditure side. The first category is salaries. Salaries are tracking below last year. So in this projection to date, we have 10 months of salaries for our 12-month employees and eight months of salaries for our teachers. So when we pay our teachers in July and August, those expenditures will post back to this fiscal year. But when we look at our percentage that we have available this year as compared to prior years, this year, we have 30.8% available, and that was compared to 29.2% available for the same time period last year. So we're underspending on salaries, as we've mentioned before, because at the very beginning of this fiscal year, we had three vacancies that we didn't fill when our enrollment came in lower, and we had teacher vacancies. We held those vacancies. Now, based on our projections for next year's enrollment, we will need to fill all of those. And we're currently in the process of hiring for all of those teachers. In terms of salaries, we're also currently underspending on our substitutes. And we used very little substitutes earlier this year, and right now, we're struggling in terms of getting substitutes. So we're underspending on our substitute salaries. And then also, we're underspending on some of the supplemental salaries that we pay. So for example, last summer, we didn't offer summer school, so that variance is in here as well. So we're, we're looking currently to underspend salaries by just over $1 million. So for next year, when we look at our budget, we'll be filling the vacancies that we held, and we've also increased our lab spending for next year. Benefits, we're actually expending at a slightly higher rate than last year. We currently have 24% available as compared to 26% last year. And when we look at our benefits, we have been overspending ever so slightly on retirement. So that's why we're showing an overspending on benefits as compared to salaries. And that's due to the fact that our benefits weren't quite budgeted right this year, I don't believe. And we have adjusted that for next year as well. So then we head into the other expenditure calories, categories. We generally call all of these group We generally call all of these grouped together logistics. So contracted services, utilities, insurance, travel, materials and supplies, capital, and then transfers and reserves. And so when we look at all of those categories, we're actually spending higher than last year. We currently have after you account for encumbrances, 10% available. And that was compared to 24.6% last year. So when we think about all of these categories, when we're comparing back to last fiscal year, last fiscal year was an anomaly. So when we closed school in March, our expenditures at the end of last fiscal year didn't come in as we would have expected them. So again, we're continuing to monitor all of these closely. So when we look at the variance in these accounts as we move forward, when we look at contracted services, we've spent less this year than we budgeted in terms of transporting special education students, the tuition we pay to other jurisdictions where our students attend. And when you look at insurance, utilities, travel, and rental, we're underspending in terms of professional development. We've been underspending in terms of instructional supplies. Now, we've really seen that pick up right now as schools are getting ready and continuing to plan for summer next year. But we're currently underspending in supplies. And we've overspent in terms of capital and capital replacement, that's related to COVID-type expenditures. And then the last category of transfers and reserves includes our staffing reserve. So we have a staffing reserve that allows us at the beginning of each school year to make adjustments if we need to add a teacher due to enrollment or other things. And this school year, we did not utilize any of that staffing reserve. And we have also adjusted that in our budget for next year as well. So we're currently showing that we're projecting that we're going to underspend our expenditures by 876,000, so just under 900,000. So together, when you take into account the under-receiving of revenue and the underspending of expenditures, it's showing that we have about $700,000 that we expect to be available at this fiscal year end. I'm so included in this monthly budget monitoring report. We do have a couple of things that we're recommending that we would like to bring to the school board for their action in June. And the reason we would like to do this in June, instead of waiting till August, when we get to fiscal year end, are some of these things have components that we really could take advantage of over the summer to make us be in a better place for school next year. So if I could take just a minute, I'll walk through those. So the first thing that we would like to purchase with funding that we're projecting will be available from year end is a replacement van to transport students. So I know we all see our school buses that are out and about every day. But in addition to the school buses, we have cars and vans that we use to transport students to special placements, and we also use them for athletics. So often, a small athletic team will be in one of our vans as well. We currently have a 2007 Dodge Caravan that we would really like to replace with a hybrid van. The reason it would be helpful to get it sooner versus waiting till the end of summer is all of the vehicles that we use to transport students, in addition to having the GPS that's standard on all of our vehicles, they also have a camera system installed, which is super important in terms of staff safety and student safety. So we would like to order the van so we can make sure that we have that stuff installed before we start transporting students in the fall. So that's the first thing. The second thing we would like to bring to you in June is maintenance support for the new high school. So when we look at our new high school, it's a geothermal building. It has a much different heating and air conditioning system than our other schools. And we would love to be able to sign a one-year maintenance agreement with Pro Air, who is the company that installed the system. This would provide us with an opportunity to cross-train our employees. Ultimately, I would like to see every single maintenance engineer trained in the system. And the training that we've done to date has been very limited. So getting that additional support, I think, will help develop our staff and help us optimize that system as we work to ensure that we're getting the absolute best from that heating and air conditioning and the geothermal system. And it's only for one year, so it would be 12 months from the date that we would sign that contract. At that point, we would be able to take that on and do it ourselves and feel tremendously confident. The third thing that we would like to ask the board for approval to purchase is a cellular signal repeater for the high school. So at Mount Daniel Elementary School, we did install a DAS system, which is a distributed antenna system. Because Mount Daniel, much like the high school, is made of CMU, which are those concrete blocks at the lower levels. So we're having issues getting our cellular signal two stories underground in the high school with all of the CMU that you find on the performing arts on locker room levels. So this distributed antenna system is an antenna that goes on the roof, and there are cellular repeaters that would be on those lowest levels, the very lowest level and the gym level. And this would repeat that signal to ensure that both Verizon and AT&amp;T would be well-received. So right now, if you're in the transportation office and you try to call them on their cell phones, they're basically completely surrounded by CMU and a lot of dirt, and our cellular signal is not getting to them.
And just, just for clarity, it's about five feet tall? It is not a tower?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, it's just a small antenna. And we have been working with Brailsford and Dunleavy, as well as Gilbane, to ensure coordination with our solar panels and providers on the roof, and the conduits are all there. So we feel like we have all of that in place, and installing that over the summer would ensure absolutely no destruction to students at all. The next thing, also related to the high school, is if you've been out to the site lately, you've seen the beautiful new scoreboard that's in place for our softball team. It looks spectacular. On the baseball field, one of the things that we're doing for baseball is we're going to move the outfield fence in about 25 feet to right-size the baseball field. When we do that, we'll replace the warning track, but we would love to give them a brand-new scoreboard versus moving the scoreboard that's there. Anyone who's seen it knows that they truly deserve and should have a new scoreboard.
And I don't know how many people watch this, but we were going to try to surprise Becky Creed. So if you could not let Becky Creed know, that would be great.
So we would purchase a scoreboard from the exact same company who has done the softball one, Dectronics, and they would install it as well. And we would need to move the electricity in. So again, this would be a spectacular thing that we could do for baseball for the summer. So we would love to do that. And then the last item that we would like to bring to the board on June 8th is the athletic uniforms. And we would love to go ahead, Marvin is ready to go ahead and place orders for the new athletic uniforms for the high school. And we would love to go ahead and start purchasing those right away. It's critical that we order the fall uniforms, but we would like to go ahead and get them all purchased. He has been working with a vendor who's under contract. So we feel that that would be another great thing if we could start moving right away. So I didn't give you price estimates on all of those, but when you combine them, it's just over $400,000 that we would like to be able to go ahead and spend. Then the last thing in this fiscal report, as always, we have the charts to compare with the prior three years. I've left the CARES Act information in here for reference. And then at the very back are the detailed reports that show revenue and expenditures by each object. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Michael, as always, for some great budget information. Does anybody have questions on what Ms. Michael presented?
Trillith and I, oh, go ahead, Ms. Downs. Thank you, Trillith, and then thank you, Ms. Michael, for that report. Two questions. One is the American Rescue Plan. Are we anticipating that will, those funds will be again, be divvied up by, according to Title I, students?
Yes, the very, if you're talking about the very last grant that we're going to get, the S R 2, yes, we have been notified that those are being distributed using the Title I formula. So our allocation is based on that. And the state is going to fund the set aside that's required for private schools. So overall, we believe we'll receive 323,000 for the American Rescue Plan.
Okay, thank you. And, and then the other question I had actually was more of a comment about the vans. And so is it right that most of our vans are 12 to 14 years old? Is that right?
So we have, in the past, been very inconsistent in terms of purchasing vehicles and buses. And we have this problem specifically with vans and buses, where we have this glut of old ones. Then we have none in the middle, and then we have newer ones, right? And what we really need to be doing is we need to be purchasing a van every single year. We have about 11, right? And if we purchased one every year, we'd have them on a 12-year replacement cycle. And the same with buses, we have 24. So we should always be purchasing two in order to keep us on that refreshment cycle where it's a level expenditure, and we don't have ones that are very, very old. And we don't buy four or five at the same time, which is what we've done in the past.
Yeah, thank you, I, I appreciate that. I just, you know, when you think, I, I guess I'm more concerned about the vans even than the buses in terms of just the safety improvements, you know, over 14 years. It's a whole different ballgame with, you know, cameras and side curtain airbags and that sort of thing. So that, that's great that we're going, I think, definitely, we should be working towards that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Downs, Dr. Ruiz Bolanos.
Thank you. As the school board liaison with the Athletic Boosters, I just want to say thank you for that new scoreboard. I think they're really going to enjoy it, and it'll come in handy for many years. I also wanted to ask about, and this is maybe not now, but if somebody can get back to me, just how, if, with this surplus that we have, if there's anything, and this is me selfishly speaking for the ESL community and support and teachers, is there a plan or there, I know there's a plan, but is there any way that we could get more support on that end?
We could certainly, let me, let me talk with William and Mr. Bates, and also Dr. Santiago. Get back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Redinger, go ahead.
Thank you, Trillith, and I, I had questions about two things. One on the vans. First, Ms. Michael, I, I agree, I think, wholeheartedly that it would be smarter to come up with, and more efficient, to come up with a replacement cycle and try to get on, sorry, whatever that happens to be. But the specific question I had is, you mentioned a hybrid van. Is it out of the range of possibility to have an electric vehicle van? And is there any consideration about expanding electric vehicle charging for teachers and staff in the parking lot? I, I've forgotten what really what the, the plans are as the parking area develops. So that's one thing, go ahead.
Thank you so much. We definitely gave a lot of thought to purchasing an electric vehicle as compared to a hybrid. And what it came down to for us is because athletics also uses our van, knowing the distance that they go to compete, we were very afraid that if we got an electric vehicle, that it would limit their ability to use it. And knowing that this van we're replacing is so old, we really didn't want to make that limitation now. Ultimately, our goal would totally be to move to an electric fleet. And we'd really like to get there. We just need to be sure that, that we're supporting athletics in the way that they needed to be supported. When we look at our new high school, yes, we are installing electric vehicle chargers. That's something we're very excited about. They're coming from ChargePoint, and they're going to be in that parking lot adjacent to the athletic fields. So we do intend to use them for our vehicles, as well as for staff or the community and others that are coming to our site.
So the only thing I'd flag on that is, let's remember that we may need electric vehicle charging stations in the bus and van facilities as well.
Yes, and we have a request in, through Don Byer, for an electric bus, including the charging infrastructure that would go with that at the property art site. So that is definitely something we're also really thinking about.
The, the other question was on the cell repeaters. Just, I, I know virtually nothing about the radiation from cellphone repeaters, but wanted to make sure that the health concerns around that were considered. Specifically, if we're installing, I know it's not a tower, but it is a, you know, effectively a repeater, a mini-tower in the building. And I said that, that's beyond my ken. The other thing is, if we are going to go that route, you know, what about T-Mobile or any other cell carriers? I don't know why we're limiting to AT&amp;T and Verizon. And separately, it's, it's super important at this point in time to make sure you get a 5G if you're going to do that compatible infrastructure and not a 4G infrastructure, because that'll make a world of difference in whether you might have to replace something in a year or two.
Thank you. We, we started the process originally, Verizon is the cell phones that our staff uses. So we started thinking about Verizon. And we wanted to go with a system where we could add additional carriers as needed. So we thought we would start with the two that are the largest in terms of use, which was Verizon and AT&amp;T. But we did want the ability in terms of adding additional carriers if needed, or the 5G. So when we bring that information back next month for the board's approval, I'll include that and additional information about the RF and the impact there as well.
Yeah, just the, you know, the, i- if the radiation differences are not great, or they're approachable for 5G, the capabilities that we'll get, you know, could be significant. And it could be very valuable to use, in use for school technologies in addition to Wi-Fi. So just, I, I would, I, I'd bite the bullet depending upon costs and go with 5G from the start, but I don't know what they are.
I think we agree with you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Redinger, Dr. Dimick.
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is a little bit off-topic, but you mentioned that the community use of the facilities will start in July. And I know many of our community members would love to have, take a look at our new high school. So I wanted to ask when we're going to start our tours for the community so they can check it out.
Yeah, it's a great question. We actually have been talking about doing a second ribbon cutting that would be in person. And we're looking at August, the issue that we have to make sure that we're done with, not the issue, the thing, but the area that we're done with is that front one-earf area and Mustang Alley. And we anticipate that those will be done in August. So we're hoping to begin some tours inside the building in August, but doing it with a sort of a ribbon cutting and kickoff of the new high school. And then also, we are, just as an aside, planning a ribbon cutting of some sort at Oak Street Elementary as well.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Trillith. So if I'm hearing you right, these items add up to about 400K. And assuming that we go forward with that, obviously, that would leave something in the neighborhood of 270 to 300K remaining. What, what would be the intended destination for those funds? Would those be added to our, to our reserves?
So when we get to that point in time, we'll, we'll either bring other recommendations in terms of things that we could use to support that money, and whether it's help with learning support, recovery, other identified needs, or it could go to ending balance or a combination of the two. What we tried to focus on right now are things where, if we could get your approval, doing them over the summer would make true sense in terms of having them ready for the students in the fall. So we would continue to try to look at ways we could spend that ending balance to benefit our students based on the timing.
Okay, um, and so one, a question that will then lead to, depending on the answer, but potential second question. These are, these are funds that are actually from the operating, operating budget. So these are not one-time funds, am I correct about that?
All of these are one-time funds, so we really want to spend them on a one-time expenditure. And I say they're one-time funds because we've already taken into account these items in our next year's budget. So for example, the excess revenue that we've received in sales tax, it's one time because we've built that increase in the next year's budget already. So we can't spend it on a recurring item because we've already included that in our budget plan for the following year.
Sure, okay, I under, yeah, I, I get that. I, I was thinking more in terms of things like the CARES Act funding or, or other sources, injections of funding that come in sort of once from the outside as opposed to being of the budget for it. What I'm wondering about is, is there the potential for using this? We've had some, some email contact and folks out there asking about substitute salaries and increasing for both substitute teachers and paraprofessionals as a way of helping to fill in the gap that there's been some difficulty in getting substitutes, especially recently. So I'm wondering if this is a potential source of funds for something like that could be done. Certainly would benefit students, but I don't know if it's, if it's possible. So I wanted to ask about that.
Thank you for the question. I'll, I'll go ahead and take it. The, the substitute para pay has actually been modified, and it was bumped up to $15 an hour for the, for the foreseeable future, which is more than it was. And, and just by the way, we are one of only a handful, maybe two, divisions in all of Northern Virginia that provide substitute paraprofessionals. No other school divisions do that. So the fact that we do it in and of itself is sort of a, a nice thing, and we have modified that pay. With respect to substitute pay, we did modify that a couple of years ago. With respect to substitute pay, we did modify that a couple of years ago, and it has helped us. Our bigger issue is not so much the financial end of the substitute issue as much as it is the process of bringing substitutes in. And we have modified subsequently the process and are in much better shape with substitutes this spring than we were last spring with similar numbers of absences. But we still have some issues that we need to resolve. And so we are continually working on how we can turn more substitutes into the system. But the pay has been modified recently for our substitutes as well. That being said, could these dollars be spent for that? I suppose they could, but that would potentially be a recurring cost as well. So we just have to be cautious about that.
Thanks, Stephanie. And I can see that risk being there, but it'd be something to think about. I mean, you know, I'm certainly glad that we have been able to increase the salaries and trying to make sure that we have the incentives to be able to make the process smooth for bringing in substitutes as needed is clearly something else we've gotta make sure we're doing. Other question, and it goes back to the replacement cycle on the van idea. I guess, I feel like I should know the answers, but what's preventing us from doing that? What are the blockers? And what would the board need to do to sort of help that process along?
So when we look at our buses, we have buses that we've purchased using a lease purchase process, which is basically financing. When we say lease purchase, we're basically borrowing money and paying them off over time, over a five-year period. So as we've been doing that in our budget, we've been refreshing those leases every time we've had one expire. And that's kind of the mechanism that we've been using to smooth that funding. And we've also started that in terms of our replacement vans and trucks. So we do have funding in our budget that we've been using to purchase one each year. And I think as we move forward, we'll try to increase that funding. But what we've been doing with the one-time funding at year-end is kind of supplementing that until we can build up to having that recurring funding in every single year. It's just in most recent times with limited revenue and expenditures that we've really been trying to address, they haven't risen to as high of a level in terms of prioritizing that funding over other things. So the use of one-time funding here is a great mechanism to help smooth that transition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do we have any other comments? Questions? All right. Seeing none. Before we adjourn, is there anything else anyone needs to raise?
Cheryl Litten.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. It's just a thank you to Falls Church Staff and Administration. This past week, I've been so proud of our school system. We had a vaccination clinic, 500 students, and we also had prom. And so I just, my heart, it sounds very cheesy, but my heart is like bursting with pride at the school system to see the tweets and the, you know, Facebook posts and Instagram about kids getting vaccinated. And then also to see all the smiling faces of kids getting dressed up for prom. And Ms. Michael and I were just talking, she actually attended and helped out, checked students in. So thank you, Ms. Michael. But it's just, it's really such a sense of pride that I have, right, always for our school system, but especially this week after all we've been through this year. And a special shout out to the George Mason High School staff for pulling off prom. As a mom of a junior, and I know Cheryl Litten has a junior as well, we really had big smiles on our faces on Saturday night. So thank you.
I second that, Vice Chair Downs. Mr. Redinger.
Just another atta boy and celebration. Last night was the Spring Band Concert. And I know at least three of us were there, me, Mr. Anderson, and Ms. Snyder. I know Ms. Snyder was there because she won many awards. But it was really, it was so enjoyable to sit in the new auditorium, you know, mask on or not, and listen to what had to be recorded pieces because of social distancing requirements. But to hear all of our great musicians give a number of performances that they had recorded, including the Ivy Musicians and their particular, and their individual projects, it was just a, it was a very joyful experience. And special congratulations to Mr. Anderson as well, whose daughter won, I believe, was the John Phillips's Award, but I probably have that wrong. Congratulations, Greg, to you and Sign.
Mr. Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Well, let me say thank you to Mr. Redinger. Yes, our kid was definitely simultaneously pleased and embarrassed to get up in front of everybody and accept that award. And Ms. Snyder, congratulations on yours as well. I'll say the other thing I'm looking forward to this week is the musical. And this all feels like a series of steps towards back to what, whatever we want to call normal now, because I don't think it's gonna be exactly the same as it was before. But this all feels like steps along the right path, so I'm happy for that. And I don't know if Mr. Redinger would like to have me relay his comment that he has made about how this meeting feels different. It does strike us both, because I'd like to relate, because I think I agree with you, that this feels like the first meeting we've had in a very long time that feels normal, where there are comments and questions that are, where the pandemic comes up. But we are doing the business that we would have been doing even in the absence of that in some ways. And so, yeah, it feels nice for us to be back in that state. So, Mr. Redinger, I just wanted to relay that and agree with you on.
Thank you for that, Dr. Anderson. And I agree, it's an exciting time. And next week, on June 2nd graduation, Ms. Snyder, we're looking forward to that for you. And we have a couple of parents of seniors, so we're really excited for next week and be able to have a real graduation. So it's a good, I know we're all happy, be getting back to normal. All right.
I would just say one more thing, just because, you know, it matters, right? Leadership matters, and the board's leadership through this pandemic has been nothing short of supportive and the best it could be under the circumstances. And I think one of the things that the staff and I appreciate the most about the leadership of the board that got us to the place where we are, where we're much more open, we were open faster than anyone else, and we're in a place now where we can do some of these things, has been the trust that you've shown in us as a staff and allowing us to think critically and to be able to problem solve and to communicate with the community about what our plans are and knowing that there were hiccups along the way. But despite those hiccups, the trust that you showed in us as a staff to be able to move through this successfully has been appreciated by all of us. So thank you for your leadership as a board. It hasn't been easy, I know, but you all have done a brilliant job.
Thank you, Dr. Nenin. All right. So I believe with that, we can adjourn. Good night, everybody. Thanks so much.